All right, so just a reminder to silence your cellphones. Mine was just about to ring, so avoid embarrassment. Meeting documents are over by Commissioner Heiburger. And if you need a listening device, catch Carroll or one of the county staff and they can help you out. Going to look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 1st, 2021.
Motion to approve the minutes for June 1st?
Second.
All righty, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We also had a special commission meeting on June 9th. Look for a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bills to be paid in the amount of $4,636,378.62.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion, second. Comments? Commissioner Barth?
The bills include $4,050,000 from our motor vehicle registration stuff rebated to the state of South Dakota.
So it comes back to us.
We hope.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have numerous reports from the sheriffs, the county sheriff, the county highway department, the auditor's account with the treasurer, and then we have auditor's office financial reports for May of 2021. And not going to, nothing, nothing special to add, okay? Carrie Dever, come on down. Personnel actions, so look for a motion to consider, a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Same motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Doesn't look like we have any special personnel actions, so that's why Carrie's not here. Abatements recommended for approval. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Chris Lilly, equalization. Yeah, we've got two abatements, actually three, but two of them are for the same parcel. The first one is items A and B is for parcel 37419. John Bliss representing the M628 VFW for the 2018 property tax, the amount of $5,081.18 and same parcel, but for the 2019 property tax, the amount of $5,142.38. On both of these, this is an exempt entity that unfortunately goes back even farther, but we're limited on how far back we can do abatements. Our staff caught this, this last year when we were reviewing our values and things like that, that the exemption amount that they should have been getting wasn't applied properly, actually from what we could find going back to 2012, so.
Ouch.
So we went back as far as we could when we caught that error and we're recommending the abatements for this.
So.
Go ahead.
It's just going to say, do we take these individually or do we do, can we do one vote for both?
I think you can do those both on one vote.
Thank you.
Chris, is this then the VFW building at 57 or 49?
That I don't know, I guess. I never looked at it that far, which one it was. What I can tell you is when they make their application, they submit to us on what percentage is exempt versus taxable. And something happened in the data entry where it got reversed, like if they said they're 20% taxable and 80% exempt, they inverse them in the computer.
Well, if I was paying five grand for something, I'd be looking into it.
Yeah, and we're going back. When they, when they caught it, we contacted them and said, hey, we've got an error. We can only go back this far. 2020 is already taken care of and the 21 moving forward is taken care of, so.
Yep. So look for a motion to approve parcels 37419 for the taxes in 2018 and 19.
That's my motion.
Call the roll.
Art?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye.
Motion carries. Parcel 23759.
Yep, this is for a veteran's exemption, 2020 property tax, the amount of $214.02. It's just a veteran that qualifies and we're going back to his award date as of 2020, so we're recommending this one for approval as well.
Motion to approve?
Second with a question.
All the, oh, go ahead.
Is this a partial for a year?
Nope, this is the permanent and total disabled. But yeah, it goes to his award date for the 2020, so it's only like a month and then we've got him for 21.
Okay, good, because otherwise, I'm sorry to hear a veteran with only a $2,000 or $200.
Right, yeah.
I mean, pretty dumpy property.
He's exempt up to $150,000 of value moving forward, but it was just that, that time period.
Roll call.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Aye. Motion carries.
Then one quick thing on just a side note, I want to let the commission know that Teresa Dunn in our office has just received her SDAAO certificate of 20 years of service as a registered appraiser, so.
Congratulations, outstanding.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Notice requests, we got a notice of disinterment permit issued by the South Dakota Department of Health for the remains of Dennis and Doctor. I believe he's going to be buried in the veteran cemetery. We also have a City of Crooks notice of public hearing regarding tax increment district number one and City of Brandon for public hearing on June 17th regarding tax increment district number six. And now we're looking for a motion for the, to authorize the auditor to publish requests for proposals for transitional housing and cultural services funded through the COSAP grant. Michelle, good morning.
Good morning. Michelle Boyd with the sheriff's office. On April 12th, we published a request for proposal for transitional housing already. However, we did not have any proposals submitted at that time. We now have some community partners that have shown interest and have some plans to collaborate, and so we would like to republish the RFP. Attached, you'll find the same RFP, we haven't made any changes to that, so it's the same thing that you had authorized back in April. So I would like to request that you authorize the auditor's office to publish a request for proposals for this transitional housing and cultural services. It's the same three-year grant period that we had talked about previously, ending in 2023. If approved, the request for proposals will need to, will be issued on June 16th with a deadline for submittal at 10:15 on Tuesday, July 6th.
Questions for Michelle? I have one. How much money are we talking about here? Do we know?
Yep.
I was just looking. $225,000, I think I found it.
Yeah.
Does that sound right?
Yes, that is the total for the housing proposal, and part of that housing proposal includes up to eight beds for housing. And then also they're going to partner with Urban Indian Health, so that'll be part of that contract cost as well. And it's to provide those cultural services within that housing unit.
I'd make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish the request for proposal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We now have a petition for compromise of lien, DPNO 49016, two different amounts, actually DPNO 49016 for $1,236.67 and DPNO 83298 for $10,729.30. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning, Melinda Storely, Commission Office. The petitioner is in the process of buying his first home for $229,000 through the Southeastern Development Foundation and discovered that he's named in two liens. He'd like to ask for your support in compromising the liens so they don't interfere with the closing date of July 13, 2021, set in the purchase agreement. He's asking for two actions today. One is to compromise and release lien DPNO 49016 in full. The lien represents poor relief for Tammy, his first wife. He's offering to pay $1,236.67, 100% of the joint lien, even though she filed for divorce July 8, 2003. He recently discovered from the courts that the divorce was dismissed in October 7 of 2008, so they remain legally married until her passing here recently on November 14, 2020. He understands that they were equally responsible for the lien during the period they were married. The petitioner stated that he inquired with the court about the misdirection that occurred regarding notification of the divorce dismissal. Staff only suggested that he could hire an attorney to request a motion to reopen the divorce and retroactively redate the judgment prior to his current marriage. The information I found with the help of the court staff was that Tammy initiated the divorce, but her counsel withdrew from providing further representation, leaving her to proceed by a self-represented divorce. No activity occurred from Tammy and after one year from the last file date, the court sent both parties a notice to dismiss. They had 30 days to respond, but neither did. Michael's notice was returned to sender as the address on record was incorrect. There was no response or further action from Tammy. Michael assumed the divorce was finalized even though he did not receive a judgment and decree of divorce. The second action is to release him from the responsibility of joint lien DPNO 38298 with no payment. The lien represents one-day hospital stay for Kathy, his current wife. I don't know how to define that at this point.
We understand.
Okay. For, the one-night stay was on April 30, 2012. The full amount of $10,729.30 will remain in her name. Believing that the divorce to his previous wife had been finalized, the petitioner remarried his current spouse May 16, 2009. However, now discovering that this was never a valid marriage, he believes he is not responsible for the lien. The petitioner filed his 2020 income taxes married but separate. The wages listed are $46,010 with a refund of $1,892. The application lists assets totaling of $3,760 and only $360 in liabilities. The petitioner is here to answer any of your questions.
First of all, Melinda, thank you for sorting this out. It's a very interesting story to tell and just to put all the pieces together so it makes sense. Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to the commission for questions. Comments? Okay. I know the petitioner is here and if you would like to, he can stand up and add any comments. No need to give your name. You can stand to stay where you are and you have absolutely no reason to make any comments either if you don't want to. So if you'd like to say anything, sir, please.
It's pretty confusing, I understand that. I'm just here to ask you for your help. I need this house, please. The woman I'm, the woman I call my wife, my, my family life for the last 12 years, all kind of up in the air right now. Without her, I don't know where I'd be. I wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be buying a house. I honestly won't know where I would be. I need, I owe it to her and myself.
I appreciate that, sir. So is this loan solely in your name?
Yes.
Okay, so leaving the lien on her would not jeopardize your ability to get the loan? Okay. Commissioner Heiburger?
My suggestion would be, and I did talk to legal counsel a little bit about this, is that we, first on the first one, DPNO number 49016, that we would accept his full payment of $1,236.67. And on the second one, that we would remove his name from DPNO number 83298, but leave it in place on the, I'm going to say other person, just because I'm not going to list the name. Leave that, that lien in place on that person that frees him up to buy the house, which would be in his name, and he did not incur those expenses. Those were medical for another person.
So I think we should have two separate actions here, is that, okay. So I'm going to look for a motion to compromise the lien and payment, with the payment of full on DPNO 49016. If everybody's amenable to that?
It's my motion.
Second.
All right, roll call, vote.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Motion carries. Now DPNO 83298 to remove the petitioner from that lien to leave it on the other individual for the full amount.
That'd be my motion.
Second. I have a comment.
Comments?
You know, this other lien, going forward, if you make small payments, we all regard that as, as very favorable. And so this second lien could be compromised at some future time. And again, small payments make us happy. And Gina's smiling already.
I understand.
Even if it's $50 a month or every other month, just some, yes.
And it's been, Andy and I have talked about it, we're going to, we're going to see counsel from an attorney moving forward about how to go about doing this whole.
Thank you, sir.
But we'll be taking care of it, I promise.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner?
Did I make a motion?
Yep, we have a motion and a second. Yep, we're down to comments, so.
That's it.
Okay, any other comments? Call the roll.
Art?
Aye.
Bender? Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Motion carries. You can work with Melinda, she can tell you what comes next, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are at the opportunity for public comment. Would anybody like to address the commission? Seeing nobody running up, we are going to go to our regular business. We have a public hearing and second reading to consider a temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of a local medical cannabis establishment's permits and/or licenses. Mr. Boge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Boge, State's Attorney's Office, appreciate your time and deference on this matter. In case you didn't catch on the reading of this proposed, second reading, sorry, proposed ordinance, I did make some corrections based on the comments and questions at our first reading to conform the, the language. As an old English teacher of mine would say that if the reader doesn't understand what you've written, it's not the reader's fault, it's the drafter's fault, so that, I'll take responsibility for that. So this language is, I believe, clear and conforms to both the informational questions and intent that we had before the first meeting, at the first reading, and then I would hope that you'll find that this conforms again to what your intent was. But that intent, as I understood it, was that we would adopt our, our local ordinance no later than 60 days after the state finishes their rulemaking process, at which point then the county would start accepting applications for those permits or licenses based on the scheme in the ordinance you would adopt following the state adoption of their rules, so.
Okay, so just a change in the wording to make it more?
It's, it's pursuant to the rule that applies to the municipalities, there's no substantial alteration, so there's not requiring any additional reading on this. It just is a clarification, reformation, if you will, to conform to what you all understood it to be, rather than any substantive change that requires that additional time and reading, so.
Thank you, Eric. Questions for Eric? Commissioner Barth?
Is 60 days long enough to figure out? Because I feel the legislature and stuff in Piramie have their own scheme that torpedoes this whole thing. I know that you can't write one, help us write one in advance of them, but 60 days is not that long when it comes to government.
Well, Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioner Barth, for the question. The, I would agree, 60 days goes far faster than any of us would, would generally think, so it will be a relatively short period of time. However, I would tell you that the state rulemaking process, similar to adoption of an ordinance at the local municipal or county level, requires several different steps. So we will know in, in large regards what those rules are before they'll, they're finally adopted or promulgated at the state level. So the 60 days is actually a much longer period of time for us to get up, ramped up and ready to go. And actually, somewhat in contravention of your point, I, I think we will be working on a draft prior to those adoptions. So I, I think that we will have something relatively framed out, some of the details we will need to fill in from what the state rules are when we see those. And I understand, again, as I conveyed to you at the first reading, the state is already in work on, on those rules, they just haven't released them in any formal sense yet, so.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, Eric, I appreciate that, and I, I would say that there are many examples of this type of regulation around the country, and I have asked Planning and Zoning to look into things that they have access to, and I think we, we could be ready to hit the road running as soon as we get the green light. And that's would be my hope, to get that done quickly when that becomes possible.
Well, we have our best people working on it, Commissioners Benega and Heiburger, so.
And I'm just sitting on my truck eating pizza.
We got the eyes of the world watching. Now, this is a public hearing, so protocol would be to take people or proponents, anybody that would like to speak in favor of this, we'd be willing to hear you at this time. Any proponents? Any opponents to this ordinance? Opponents, if you'd like to speak in opposition to this ordinance, I'd like to hear from you. Good morning.
Good morning, guys. My name is Sarah Coob, I'm from Sioux Falls, and I'm against this. I, I would rather you guys do nothing than to sign this into law, so, but thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, so look for a motion to approve or, or not.
Motion to approve.
Pre-dict action, there's one additional topic, I was trying to keep them somewhat separate, but it's related, so I would like to spring it to your attention. Some of the additional folks working on this around the state have identified one additional issue, which is not part of this ordinance, but might be one that you folks would like to work on or ask me to work on, and that's the issue of whether or not smoking cannabis medical, in this case, in public would be prohibited. IM26 simply said that IM26 didn't authorize such action, but permitted penalties to be enacted or proposed for certain types of actions. All four of the subsections in that section of IM26, three of which are already illegal, driving under the influence, committing malpractice, I forget what the third one is, but anyway, they're already covered by existing statutes. The one that's not covered by existing statute is the consumption or smoking marijuana in, or cannabis in, in a public setting or on public transportation. However, in this setting in Minnehaw County, it's my understanding there really is no public transportation that the county would need to be concerned with. So it's really just the, in the public setting or in a public venue that's generally open to the public. So in this case, that could be licensed alcohol establishments or public parks or anything along that.
Wall Lake.
Exactly. So again, not proposing or advocating one position or another, but simply asking for direction from you folks to whether or not that's like we did at the first informational meeting on this ordinance, is whether or not you would want me to draft something along that line for future first and second reading that you could adopt at, at some later point. If not, that's fine, too. I just wanted, while we were on the topic, to make sure you're aware of that. So there's no action item on that, you can let me know at your leisure during the meeting today, but just wanted to make sure you're aware.
Well, since you brought it up, I'll open it for comments from the commission.
I would like to see something drafted, just the same as, as smoking cigarettes.
Or drinking alcohol.
Or drinking alcohol. You are allowed to do it in, in your own comfort. I just don't feel like if I decide to go to Wall Lake that I want to sit by somebody and, and smell them smoking their cigarette or smell them smoking their marijuana, and that's, that's my right. And they still can smoke in many, many other places. It would just be similar to what we already have for other, for other substances.
Other comments?
I have no concern about putting a draft together, I think, it's just getting a fresh start or an early start on that process.
I think that's the consensus. Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, so public testimony is closed, we'll move on to action. Did I get a motion or a second?
Yes, we had a motion and a second, I think.
Did we?
We just got a motion.
Oh, I made a motion.
Second. Okay, motion, second by Benega. Roll call, vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Motion carries. All right, we have a public hearing to consider a special on sale wine retail license application submitted by Elrod Shrine for an event on July 17, 2021.
Good morning, Madison Roberts from the auditor's office. I am just here to consider a motion to approve a special event license for the Elrod Shrine for a event on July 17 of 2021.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Anybody here in, as a proponent in favor of this? Anybody here as an opponent? Not seeing anybody running up, I will ask for.
Question, Mr. Chair, it's, it's not you, Madison, is it? Getting, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kirsty?
Motion carries. Consider a resolution to authorize the chair to sign a South Dakota reinvestment payment program, assignment of payment to Minnehaw County, Auditor Kite. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So if this item looks familiar, it is, back on May 18th, they had brought this to the commission as well with, after some additional discussion with the organizers of, of this program, and we needed a few more documents, so that's, I'm here today to present this resolution. A little background, so back in 2019, the county planning zoning commission recommended the approval of a conditional use permit for the Dakota Line Dairy to operate a 7,700 animal unit confinement. And then in April of 2020, the county commission approved participation in the South Dakota reinvestment program. That, that allowed funds, refund of sales tax paid to South Dakota related to specific economic development projects. So funds are to be refunded to the recipient counties without limitation of their future use. So a tax rebate that we estimate to range between $400,000 to $500,000 is due Minnehaw County related to the completion of the Dakota Line Dairy project, which is located south of Humboldt. To receive these funds, the Minnehaw County Commission must pass the resolution and authorize the board chairman to sign the assignment of payment for South Dakota reinvestment payment program, which allows the tax rebate be paid to the county. So the auditor's office, we recommend approval of the actions on the resolution and the signature of the assignment document.
So all those in favor of receiving half a million dollars is what we need?
Yes.
Approval on? Commissioner Barth?
I was just going to raise my hand, I'm willing to accept some half a million here or there. I'll make a motion to approve this, and does it require the chair's signature or?
It does, yes.
Okay. Authorize you to sign it.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Question for Ben. Auditor Kite, so on future CFOs, is this the only one we have to sign for? So if another CFO came online later this year and that same program would, would cover it, do we have to do another document or is this it?
I, I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
We'll find out. All right, so we have two different agreements for the Indian Child Welfare Act qualified expert witness services. Mr. Boge?
Did we vote on that last one?
What?
Did we vote on that last one?
I don't think we voted on that.
Okay. We just have a motion and a second, we didn't vote.
Oh, I thought I asked for, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We voted. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, for sure. No.
Good morning again.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Eric Boge, State's Attorney's Office. As I understand, and all of you have been in, in office several years now, you've seen these contracts before. This is actually a no out-of-pocket to the county contract arrangement whereby the, we This is actually a no out-of-pocket to the county contract arrangement whereby the, we have a contract with the state of South Dakota, and in turn, we have a contract with Yellow Robe Consulting Incorporated. You may have just in the past seen a reference to Luke Yellow Robe, who is actually the sole proprietor of that business, but he is incorporated, so it's a corporate name. He is the expert on the A&amp;N cases. He has that arrangement with several counties throughout South Dakota and does an excellent job, as I understand it, for us here in Minnehaw County. Again, not an out-of-pocket expense. We receive the money from the state. We in turn then pay Mr. Yellow Robe. It is a small increase as each of the years have gone along. It does increase nominally, but it is slightly more money total on the contract. But again, nothing more out of the budget to Minnehaw County. So would ask for the commissioner's support both on the county agreement with the state of South Dakota to authorize State's Attorney Hager to sign that, and then also the one with the county to Yellow Robe Consulting Incorporated.
So we have two different agreements to sign.
Make a motion between the state's attorneys and South Dakota Department of, State Department of Social Services to provide funding for the Child Indian, Indian Child Welfare Act Witness Services.
So that's a motion.
That's my motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And then we have one more. Want to read that one, too, Commissioner?
Act for a motion to approve Minnehaw County State's Attorney and Luke Yellow Robe of Luke, or excuse me, of Yellow Robe Consulting to provide professional services at ICWA Expert Witness. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Morning, Lori. You must be next.
I am next, I think. I am here this morning to ask you all, Lori Montes, Assistant Director at Human Services. I'm here this morning to ask you all permission for our director to sign an agreement with Sioux Falls Housing for five shelter plus care vouchers. We do this annually. That allows us at the Safe Home Program to recoup some funding for some of those apartments. So each year, we have the five shelter plus care vouchers that Sioux Falls Housing oversees. We do have to provide a 25% match for those vouchers, and that comes in the form of services. And so all of our case management, the groups that we do, life skills training, transportation, food, all of that goes toward that match. So we definitely have no difficulty meeting the 25% match for those five vouchers. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Questions? Motion?
Make a motion to authorize the Director of Human Services to sign an MOU with the Sioux Falls Housing and Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
So is Brett coming in for this one? Good morning, sir. So we have, looking for a motion to authorize the Director of Human Services to enter into two agreements with the Link and Avera to allow Minnehaw County HS Alliance to provide case management services. Explain, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner Brett Johnson, Supportive Services Manager for Human Services. Alliance has always been an intensive case management program, working with individuals that have high recidivism rates and certainly have experience with substance abuse and mental health concerns. Primarily, we had been focusing on jail population about a year and a half. When we were approved for grant funding through the MacArthur Foundation, we started providing a similar service for those that were going in and out of detox in the sobering center when it was lodged in the old jail building. So we've been providing that level of service, working with Avera and Sanford Emergency Departments and Detox. And so obviously, we're transitioning into providing the same type of service for those that are utilizing the Link for similar purpose. We're really focusing on those that actually go into the Observation Center. So we have the Withdrawal Management Side, which is technically detox. And we also have the Observation Center, which is those individuals that essentially, for lack of a better term, are there to sleep it off, per se, and go on their way throughout the day. So we're seeking approval for, from you guys to obviously have our director sign off on what they have actually indicated as, we consider it an MOU. They have listed it as a consulting agreement and then the Business Associate Agreement. No, no funds are being exchanged for this, just an agreement that we provide those services as a case management program.
And it's absolutely critical to the success of the Link's operations.
Yeah, absolutely. What we've seen over the last, the first two weeks, and what we certainly saw with the population that was going in and out of sobering center, is quite often, they will be admitted late afternoon, early evening, at night, and often are being discharged before we're even back at work at eight o'clock in the morning. So we're really working with the staff at the Link to try to figure out ways to either have those individuals sleep there a little bit longer, possibly adjust our schedule a little bit, because we always want to make sure that we're meeting people where they're at. And when they're at the Link would be the best possible time to do that, so.
Thank you, Brett. Brett? All righty, so look for a motion.
Do we need two motions or do we just, is it one motion? Because it's two different contracts.
Two different agreements.
I'm just wondering. It, two motions. So I'll make the first one. I'll make the motion to qualify service organizations for the Business Associate Agreement, that we would approve that to be signed.
Okay.
Second, that motion.
Motion and a second. Did you get that, Madison? All righty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries unanimously, and now a second motion.
Make a motion to approve the consulting agreement between Avera McKennan and Minnehaw County Human Services.
Second.
All righty, everybody wake up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Brett. All right. Back to Madison. Consider a motion to approve a consume and blend alcohol beverage license application from Shelby Radetsky for an event on August 21st. Must be a wedding.
Yes, it is. Good morning. Just consider a motion to approve consumable license for Shelby Radetsky for an event on August 21st. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And then the same thing, motion to approve a consume and blend alcohol beverage license from Don Taylor for an event on July 24th.
Yep, and that would be a motion to approve a consumable license for Don Taylor on July 24th. It's a wedding as well.
Look for a motion. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Go ahead with the last one.
Consider a motion to approve a consumable license for Emily Hyling for an event on June 25th. That's a class reunion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's not for the graduating class that we just had, is it?
No, I don't think so.
10th, 20th, 30th?
It was a 40th class reunion.
Yeah, I think it was a 40th.
40th, that would be mine, all right. Might have to go to theirs. I'm going to miss mine. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Madison. All right. Look for a motion to authorize the chair to sign Amendment Number One to the 2021 Southeastern Behavioral Health, Behavioral Health Agreement for Mob Crisis Team Services. I didn't know we had a mob crisis team.
MCT, Mobile Crisis Team.
Oh, it's cut off. Oh, okay.
Sorry. Yes, you know, about 10 years ago, the county worked with the community in Southeastern Behavioral Health to establish the mobile crisis teams, which they go out when there's a situation that would probably benefit from having somebody with mental health background to come in instead of just automatically taking them into a mental health hold. It's been a successful program for us to go through and do that. The contract does not have a change in the final dollar amount that we pay. Rather, when the contract was established, and it's just been continued for years that way, that internally in the contract, that it would state that Southeastern was to pay a certain amount of money to their staff. And along the way, they've said, you know, we really need to increase that, and we need to change the contract to reflect what we pay. In conversation, we said, why are we even addressing that within the contract? Our issue, our concern is the total dollar amount. So they'll be taking care of the changes that they need to do for their organization to better reflect the work that's happening. And we're just removing that language from the contract.
Okay, questions for Carol? I have a comment. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I guess my only comment would be, you know, we talk, we hear nationally about, you know, defunding the police and, you know, probably more putting law enforcement funds to different areas. We've been doing this for a long time, and that's what we're doing with this mobile crisis team. We're trying to avoid that confrontation between law enforcement and individuals that are having that mental health crisis or whatever it may be. So I think this is good policing. It's good public policy, and I'm glad that we do it. And it's been around for as long as it has been, so. Commissioner?
I just would jump on that comment. I mean, and based on the reports that we get monthly, they're tremendously successful. They get very high reviews, that they are really able to make a difference in people's lives.
It's utilized quite often. Commissioner?
I have one more comment on that. At this point, we only have an adult mobile crisis team. And at some point, hopefully, we'll be able to dig into looking at what we could do with juveniles. Because as we see an escalation in juvenile mental illness issues and out of control in the home situation, right now, our only recourse is to take them, you know, out of the home. And so hopefully, in the future, that'll be something that we look at, too, is how can we address young adults?
Excellent. All righty, so motion and a second. You got that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And Carol, we have a lease with Lincoln County.
Yes, Lincoln County has requested an agreement to utilize Minnehaw County's courtrooms. As you are aware, Lincoln County's courthouse has courtrooms that are not able to meet the demand of Lincoln County's growth, and this issue is complicated by aging courtrooms with environmental issues. The presiding judge of the Second Circuit, Judge Robyn Howman, recognizes that while the Minnehaw County courthouse does not have unused space available, the circuit court is committed to adapting schedules and space to accommodate this potential lease. In determining the dollar value, we looked at lots of different things, including what's the cost of taking care of that building? And courthouse is highly specialized, and you don't find certified law enforcement officers doing security at buildings. And we have a whole team that does that. Between those two, it is $1.3 million a year to take care of that courthouse. That doesn't include such things as insurance, depreciation, or parking, any of that. So the attached lease is for $100,000 for 12 months or one year. We see this as an opportunity to provide support for a neighboring county as they make long-term arrangements for court space in Lincoln County. We also recognize that with Minnehaw County's growth, the window of time for which we can offer space is limited. But we want to be a good neighbor.
Lincoln County's money is good here, okay. Questions? Comments? Motions?
Mr. Chair, I just would comment, I don't think we're charging them enough. I mean, I wouldn't rent, you know, an apartment for the exact cost of that apartment. We're doing them a favor. They ought to favor us with a little bit more of that good money.
Any other comments? Did I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Bender, second by Benega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Liaison reports. Anybody been busy with their assignments? I know we are, but do we have anything to report on it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would just say in Planning and Zoning Parks Department that there's been some issues with routiness and stuff at Wall Lake again. And people refusing to leave when their park is closed and, anyway, just.
Park closes at?
Nine, I believe.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
And I would just add, I have been in touch with the Sheriff's Department about some of those issues, and they have stepped up patrols out there. We've got some additional signage that we've put up about reminding people that alcohol cannot be consumed in our parks. And so they're optimistic that people will, you know, everybody responds, responded well last year to the additional patrols. We're hopeful not to have to bring them back to the level they were at last summer. Things at Wall Lake this year have been a little bit better with the Sioux Falls pools open, but even not all the Sioux Falls pools are open because of their challenges with staffing. So we appreciate the partnership that we have, and it's a great facility and a beautiful spot out at Wall Lake. And we just ask people to follow the rules, so everybody can enjoy it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other liaison reports. Last night, I don't know if this is liaison report, but I was invited to the Sioux Falls Development Foundation at a pre-media meeting last night. They released a large hog processing facility that will be building a $500 million facility on the northeast side of town in one of the parks. It's already zoned for heavy industrial, so they don't have any hoops to jump through as far as, at least as far as they're aware. For zoning, there's always the permits that have to be acquired by the various environmental agencies, of course. $500 million includes, I believe they said $47 million for their own wastewater treatment, so they're going to treat all their wastewater. And another $20 million for equipment that will go into air scrubbers and that type of thing. They're going to do everything they can, cover lagoons and everything to keep odor and that type of thing down. The way I understood and heard it, they're going to process 22,000 hogs a day. And they're going to be different than Smithfield in that they don't do the smoking and curing, and it's just basically processing them to box pork to be sent out to other organizations. So a farmer's owned cooperative, over 200, I believe, number of farmers that are involved in this. Very well capitalized, higher than most banks, triple what most banks would require for capitalization. So they're looking at breaking ground next year. It sounds like an exciting project. I asked, you know, my perspective, sitting in this chair, is are we going to see applications for CAFOs? They said they honestly couldn't answer that question. They didn't anticipate it because they own another facility, Holstone Foods, I believe is the name of the company, down in Kearney, Nebraska. And between Kearney and Sioux Falls, they'll be processing 12 million hogs annually, which is what are owned by the 200 farming, or farms that are going to be working on this. So they're basically going to be processing their own hogs that are owned by the cooperative. Yeah, so it is a big deal. $500 million, absolutely no incentives were requested, no tiffs, no rebates. They're coming in and they're going to do it without any assistance, so it is a pretty big deal.
Is it in city limits or is it, is it in the city property area?
In the city limits, yep, right by Gage Brothers, yep, on the east side, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just comment that, you know, the issue of the labor shortage that we have, I know you might have been there also when we had a meeting with Mike Rounds. And Mike Huther was there at that same meeting along with Mayor Tenhaken. And we asked about worker visas, and Senator Rounds felt that was a serious issue. And I think I heard just recently that there are 20,000 job openings in South Dakota and only 3,000 unemployed. And, you know, with seasonal employment in the hills and stuff, we need the, those worker visas to get this work done. And yet, some of the infrastructure that processed those visas has been dismantled, and we need to get that back and going again. I think our, both of our senators would probably agree with that. But, you know, how many people do they expect to work at this plant?
They anticipate employment of 1,100 when they open. And in Kearney, they use the, I think they referenced a T-something visa. And about 500 of their employees down there do come from Mexico. They indicated that the way the visa works is most of them are college educated or maybe even college students that are, you know, working for so many months and earning money to go back, so, yeah.
We need people that want to work, and we need to help them to want it.
So will they use, you know, what country might these? So will they use, you know, what country might these people come from on these immigration passes? I don't know. They didn't know. That's just what they do down there, so, yeah. That was my liaison report. Any others? Any new business? Commissioner.
Just for our listening audience, I'm just going to go back to notices and requests that the city of Crooks is noticing a public hearing on June 28th regarding the tax increment district, and that Brandon is doing a public hearing on June 17th regarding their tax increment. Sometimes people like to attend those, and I thought our listening audience might want to know the dates.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. All righty. Any other old business? All right, we do have an executive session, so I am going to look for a motion to adjourn us until 10 o'clock.
Adjourn or recess?
Recession.
Oh, we don't have one?
No, we do, I'm sorry. It's recess, thank you.
Let's go to recess.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
I'd like to make a second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.